Guys, I'm stuck in traffic, so I'll get there when I get there. I don't know if you heard that, but...
All right. We are past 4:30, so I will call the County Council Executive Committee meeting of October 17th to order and ask staff to call the roll. President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alda Vidiver?
Here.
Alda Madison?
Here.
Alda Govindarajan?
Here.
Alda Conklin?
Here.
Alda Evers?
Here.
Alda Bennett? You have form. Thank you, Karen. Did not check to see if we have public comments. We have one registered speaker. All right, we have Sean Burke, unknown district, and step up, and you'll have three minutes. One second, turn your mic on.
Is it working? Okay. Several months ago, I came to Alda Madison with some concerns about a hotel in her district that's, to be very frank, not livable. And I was told that she was going to reach out to her county partners and try to solve it, because what I don't think anyone's understanding is, is that there are a lot of people that have nowhere else to go if this property gets shut down, and there's no plan in place. Today, I actually spoke with Matt Tucker from Building Inspection, and he agreed with me that there needs to be a plan in place to help these people. I've been living in conditions with bedbugs that are just infesting everything. Smoke detectors that haven't been checked in over a year. Recently, someone brought in multiple dogs, and it's become a health issue, not to mention the drug needles that are encountered out in the yard, walking dogs, and the calls from the police which are constant. I've offered to work with you, work with her and other people on this, but I've reached a point where I can't do it anymore. It's been rebuffed over and over and over again, and tomorrow, I am actually meeting with a state representative, and we're going to come up with a plan if that involves circumventing the county and the state to start helping people, because people need to get helped. And we don't need to be ignored. I understand that the city has a lot of things going on with Block M and the tragedy that occurred in the last week there, but there are other pressing issues that need to be addressed, and these, some of these are safety issues, and I'm not going to sit back and do anything without having a plan in place. So I hope that there can be a positive conversation that can be had, and we can move forward on this, but until then, I'm going to, if, if nothing's going to happen on the city or county's end, I'm going to leapfrog everybody and go to the state. So I'm sorry if I ran, overran my time. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Did not, thank you. Questions for registrants? We have Alda Madison.
Thank you, Chair.
Hold on.
Sorry. Can you hear me? So I, I don't want to put your personal story out here on public record, because I think we all know the story, but because you're here and you're mentioning bedbugs again, are you now wanting to share the place where you're living so we could address it?
Again, we've had, I just had this, literally just had this conversation with Matt Tucker. I've had this conversation with Jim O'Keefe, who all realize that until there's a plan in place for people to go, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to put a bunch of people, including disabled veterans, elderly, or children with autism, out on the street. If you want to, that's fine, but I don't want to. And to be honest with you, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the county's program that failed me, and it failed several people at the property. So you can try to put me in an awkward position, but my, I'm going to stand firm. I'm not just doing this for myself, I am doing this for the people who seem to have been forgotten by the county and by the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments or questions, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our last meeting on October 3rd. Would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Okay, without any objection, or, oh my gosh, unless I see any hands or folks, my brain is not working. I will assume unanimous consent unless I see or hear otherwise. That moves us on to disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, that will move us into agenda item number two, legislative file number 80299 for CARES program updates, and welcome Assistant Chief Sedman.
Hi there, good evening. Chase Sedman, Assistant Chief Madison Fire and the CARES Program Coordinator. Hopefully, everybody has received the third quarter CARES update via email. If you haven't, I'm not sure if Karen is able, yep, we got it up on the screen as well. So I'll just go through brief updates, and then obviously, I'm sure there's going to be quite a few questions. So currently, CARES is operating two teams, and we are operating seven days a week now. As of September 16th, we expanded into the weekends. So Monday through Friday, we're operating eight, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., and on the weekends, we're operating between 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. There's quite a bit of conversation about expanding out into the county, and there's conversations around what the next expansions are, so all's I can tell you is we've run over 3,500 calls, and I imagine that there's a lot of questions, so I don't want to stand up here and talk at you, so what can I answer? And I'm happy to refer to the slides and go through the whole report if you'd like, if you think that'd be more appropriate, but I want to spend your time wisely.
Alda Vidiver?
Thanks, Chief. So obviously, the county executive has suggested expanding CARES to sort of neighboring areas. What, in your opinion, would it take to be able to, how far basically out into surrounding areas can Madison's team actually maintain?
Well, that's a great question, and so what we've decided is that the Madison metro area, in other words, any of the cities and villages that touch the city of Madison, sound reasonable to us. Now, it also depends on the size and how many calls for service they may end up having. Certainly, there's going to be a big difference between Sun Prairie and Manona because of population size, types of calls that, the types of call for services that those communities have. So what I can say is that we consider anything more than a 20-minute response probably not reasonable. Now, I can tell you that even in the city of Madison, if we have a team that's available on the far east side and they have to go to the far west side, it might take them more than 20 minutes, but that's what we kind of consider a reasonable response. So if we were to draw a circle around the capital that goes essentially out, and I don't even want to name the radius of that circle, but it needs to be a reasonable response time for us, which is approximately 20 minutes. So the, there's a lot of conversation right now about what if two or three or four of these communities want to take on CARES? How many communities can we take on? And it's really hard for me to say that, because I don't know what the call volume is going to be. I've asked the 911 Center for all the law enforcement responses for each one of the jurisdictions that surround us, so I have those total numbers, but that doesn't tell us exactly how much they're going to be calling for CARES. So there's a lot of unknown right now.
All right, Alda Conklin, question?
Thank you, Chair. Assistant Chief Sedman, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good. I'm just wondering, how long do you think, or how far away are we from 24/7 CARE?
That's another tough question, but I'm ready for it. So honestly, I think one of the biggest hurdles that we have right now is the labor market with our behavioral health crisis workers. Every time that we talk about expanding, Journey really struggles to hire more workers for us, and since we've been in service in the last two years, we've lost three crisis workers to better-paying jobs. So that's been a struggle, because then obviously, we have to go through the recruitment, hiring, and training process all over again, so we've had to take the team out of service because of labor market issues and the fact that those crisis workers, being contract workers for the county, aren't being paid as much as their peers in other areas. So that, that is a struggle for us. 24/7 should also depend on whether or not there are resources available at 2:00 in the morning for us to refer folks to. So you probably all have been informed about the mental health triage center that's in the county exec budget, so that should be a 24/7 brick-and-mortar mental health triage center that we can take people to at 2:00 in the morning. So when we have a facility like that available to us, that will give us a lot more incentive to be a 24/7 operation, but until that happens and until we can work out the workforce issues with Journey Mental Health, it's going to be a struggle.
Okay. So obviously, money is one barrier from keeping you for 24/7. And I got a question, so I thought the Ferris Center over there, over off of Rimrock, you know, where the Huber Center was, I thought that was turning into...
That is, I believe, the building that...
That we're looking at.
I believe they found the building and the land, but they're out for an RFP for who's going to provide the service, for the actual service provider.
Okay. And then one other question, so why is it that on the weekends, we're not doing 12-hour shifts? Is that...
Yeah, so everything that we've done with our expansions, we've done our best to be informed by data. So when we looked at Madison Police Department data from 2018 to 2020, like when we were initially preparing to put our first team on the street, what we found was, is that the majority of the calls for service that involved some sort of mental health aspect were Monday through Friday between the hours of like 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And it's not to say that things don't happen on the weekends, right? So, but that was why when we initially started, we started in the central district, because per square mile, that was where most of the calls were happening, and we started Monday through Friday from, you know, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So once we were approved to hire the extra staff for the weekends, right now, we only have one team in service on the weekends. So that's why we don't have 12 hours. So all of our workers work four 10-hour days. That makes up their 40-hour week, so to give you an example, CARES 1 is out of Fire Station 3, they start at 8:00 a.m., and they work, they respond until 5:00 p.m., but their day ends at 6:00, so they can get all their paperwork done. CARES 2, that responds out of the Town of Madison Fire Station, they start at 11:00 a.m., and they work until 9:00, but they respond till 8:00. So there's six hours in the middle of the day where we have two teams. On the weekends, we just have the one team available, and we can only ask them to work a 10-hour day. So when we have enough staff to put two teams in service on the weekend, then we can expand the hours. And so our next, that's already been approved in the budget, our next expansion is to have a third team during those peak hours during the week. And what we hope is that because we will have that extra staff, it'll be six community paramedics and six crisis workers at that point. We hope that we can open up a second team on the weekends, but like I talked about with shortages, and you know, people need to take vacations, and they have sick days and everything else.
Kids and...
With such small amounts of employees, it's hard to keep us in service constantly, so we just have to be thoughtful about it.
Okay, and this is my last question. Are you looking, if, if we were to open up a third team, would that be on the west side to kind of level out the playing field, or is there any talks of where that may be housed at?
Yeah, so what we'll probably do for starters is put them at the Town of Madison Station as well, so we'll have two teams at that same station. You know, that, that address on Fish Hatchery Road is kind of near west, it's kind of southwest, so it gives us pretty good coverage of the west side, and obviously, our Station 3 on Willie Street gives us that east-side corridor. But, but the next question is if Sun Prairie wants us to respond into their jurisdiction, we'll probably have to put a team at Station 11, which is out on Nelson Road and up a high crossing, because that'll get us a lot closer to Sun Prairie. If Fitchburg is the city that decides they want to join us in a partnership, that Town of Madison Station is already good, right? It's just right up the road from Fitchburg. If Middleton wants to join us in a partnership, we probably need to put a team on the further west side, like Station 12, as outlined. So right, as of right now, that third team is just going to be housed at the town station.
Okay. I know they said the last one was my last question, but this one really is my last question. So if, if these other jurisdictions, Sun Prairie, Middleton, they want to add CARES team, are they going to help fund the CARES team and pay for that?
Yeah, so in the county exec's budget, the way I understand it, was that he put forth $200,000 in matching funds. So, so any jurisdiction that wants to have CARES services is going to need to put forward some of their own funds, and the county will match the rest. What I don't know is what we will charge a Middleton or a Sun Prairie at this very moment. I'm working with our finance manager and the fire chief and the mayor's office on figuring out a pricing schedule.
Because would you look at old, like old calls, basically, like you said before, you were looking at for the past couple of years, and see which ones could have been diverted? Okay.
Yeah, and it'll, it'll make sense for us to just get an understanding of, of the pace that those new towns will set for us. How many times a day are they going to call us? We really won't know until we start responding.
Right, right.
We can look at previous data to make some estimates, back of the napkin math, but, you know, we really won't know until we, until we try that phase.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't discussed this, but I assume that means we would also have intergovernmental agreements with those municipalities as well, like we do for metro services and other things that we provide outside of...
Exactly, that, that's the way I understand it. And it's similar to, take Shorewood, for instance, we cover the village of Shorewood for fire and EMS right now. We have a contract with them to do that, and so it would just be similar, in my opinion.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, out of the, I think it was 23, a little bit over 2,300 individuals, who you've made contact with, are, do you happen to know, like, how many, is this each unique individuals or repeat?
Yeah, so that's what it means by the individuals on there, because you'll notice that, that number is not the same as our total number of calls.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that part.
So we see, we do see the same people over again.
Yeah.
But, but we've seen that many individuals, individual people?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We, but we do, and, and this is something that, that is a challenge for our team. We, we get folks calling up and asking, calling 911 and asking for CARES, because they provided a great service, and we have a slush fund, we can buy people small things to help them, you know, an air conditioner in the summertime, and we can hand out bus passes when needed. So we, we've actually had to create some boundaries with some of our clients to say, hey, you can't just call us for a bus pass, right? And so that, it's, it's challenging.
Yeah.
When, when you offer these extra services that hadn't been there before, people appreciate it, but sometimes they, they, they might want to possibly take advantage of it, so we work on boundaries with folks. But we do see a lot of the same people.
Yeah, because I guess for, I'm just trying to understand, I don't, this isn't necessarily a CARES thing, but on the, you know, once they've gotten to help or whatever the support is, how does that look for them, you know, like a year, two, three from now, not to be in a position where they need CARES called, or, you know, someone's calling on their behalf, for example? Do you see it improving?
You know, the, the...
Because I know Journey is like...
We've been in service, you know, I can tell you just anecdotally that we've seen a decrease in the number of frequent callers, and that's what our community paramedics have always worked on, I shouldn't say always, since 2015, we've gone out into the community and worked with people that are frequent flyers for medical reasons, and so we've been able to affect them, to give them healthcare system education and prevent them from calling emergency services. But what the folks are seeing now, it's, it's hard for me to say downstream, it's hard for us to follow people for six months or a year unless they keep calling us. We don't have access to their medical records and everything else, so that, that's one of the struggles that we have with data, is, you know, we can tell you the demographics of all the patients we've seen, we can tell you how much time we spend with people, we can tell you when we refer people to services, but a lot of people want to know, hey, what's, what's the real outcome? You know, what's this, how is this person going to benefit from CARES six months from now or a year from now? And those are a lot of the questions I can't answer.
Gotcha, thank you.
But we do reduce, we do reduce the number of calls to 911. We reduce jail visits and we reduce emergency room visits, we can tell you that.
Thank you, Alda. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
I have a comment and a question, is that okay? Okay, so to follow up on your question about funding, upstairs in a few minutes, they're going to be discussing the amendments for the, for the operating budget for the county, and they have an amendment there specifically for crisis and Journey mental health workers to try to increase their salary so we can get more people. So you can write, you know, and support that, I think that also helps if we kind of support that with the county supervisors, so that's a comment. And then a question, I know I had asked you before about expanding CARES to service calls for, for school routes, either metro or the private buses, but I didn't really, like I just asked you, I didn't really ask to take any action on that. What would be the steps to take action on, on getting something like that? Would that be even more resources? How can we accommodate that kind of services so when the bus driver calls 911, they route it to CARES instead of NPD?
And, and so we're built as a 911 response team, and so if the bus driver is calling 911, and that bus driver is describing a nonviolent behavioral health emergency, and CARES is available, CARES should be sent, regardless of the setting or anything else. But what I can't tell you is that CARES will be available, that the bus driver may very well ask for CARES, and we get this a lot. About 54% of the calls that happen during the day, CARES is already on a call. So we, we can't answer a lot of calls, so that just reverts back to law enforcement. So that's, the, the best way I can answer that is that if, if the call comes into the 911 Center as a behavioral health emergency and CARES is available, it's their job to send CARES.
Okay, so there's no change to the script then, you don't think, at all?
I don't, what we haven't done is, is offered any particular community's special access to CARES, like we don't have a landline or any, go ahead.
So maybe, maybe I should ask the question in a different way. So for the library, for example, I know that you have offered some assistance and training for the librarians in Meadowwood specifically, I don't know if you do in all the libraries, but they have been there training the staff on what to say when they call. So can we offer maybe that to the, to the boss, to the metro drivers and the Madison private school people? I mean, have their contacts?
Always willing to do outreach. In fact, that's, that's the one thing that we ask our people to do when they're not actively riding on the CARES team, is to be doing outreach in the community, so... So, and I remember our emails back and forth.
Oh, yeah.
I'm happy to help with any outreach or any training or anything else that we can provide.
Okay, perfect. I follow up on that with you, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Alder Vediver.
Yeah, can you speak a little bit about with the addition in the county executive's budget to the 911 call center? That there's plan for additional people at the call center who can handle some of these calls?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Can we talk about the expected impact on CARES for that?
Yeah, so when we were researching these sort of alternative response programs around the country, one of the best practices we found in some of the longer-running programs was that they had clinicians in their 911 center to help triage the calls to the appropriate service. So in other words, journey mental health has a crisis line, right? Not a lot of people know the number to the crisis line. And so they don't call it directly, but having a clinician in the 911 center would allow them to decide, based on their clinical expertise, whether or not connecting them with a crisis line is appropriate. But the other thing that I found really interesting was that CARES actually manages about 15% of their calls over the phone. So there are people that call 911 that are experiencing a behavioral health emergency and they don't want anybody to show up at their house, they want to talk to somebody. And so CARES acts as that crisis line. The benefit to the county having clinicians in the 911 center is that they cannot even send that call to CARES. They can manage that call at the 911 center without any CARES response at all. And there's data around the country, I've seen out of Tucson, and I think the county exec's office mentioned this, but somebody has said something to the effect of 80% of calls could be diverted. Now, I don't, I don't know that I completely agree that that would happen here, but I do agree that a lot of 911 centers that have clinicians in the center reduce a lot of calls for service to police and to their crisis response teams. So it's just, it's a best practice in the whole model of the 911 system.
Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Okay, so one more question. It occurred to me, do you have, from the staff, do you have people that speak different languages? Or do you use the language line to help people in crisis?
Yeah, so right now, we only have one Spanish-speaking member, Paco Bonin. He's a, he's a great paramedic, too. He worked, he worked for the State Department, has a great resume, but unfortunately, he's the only person on our team that's fluent in Spanish. So we do end up using the language line. And when we're hiring people, and I'm sorry, just one more, when we're hiring people, we are looking for that type of diversity. In the paramedics that are out there that apply for our jobs, we don't see a lot of diversity. We see gender diversity, but we don't see a lot of ethnic diversity, and we certainly don't come across a lot of people that are bilingual. So we were lucky with Paco.
So when you're doing recruiting, are you doing like here, you know, like local recruiting or is this a national search?
We've done both. So we, there's a number of national publications, EMS publications that we recruited through, but we also recruited locally as well. And honestly, and I mean this sincerely, if you have any advice on how to help us get in touch with a population of people that is bilingual, but they, but are licensed paramedics for three years, I'm all in because it certainly makes a difference. We've had Paco requested specifically because of the fact that he's a Spanish-speaking bilingual person.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. I am not seeing any other hands or members looking to ask some questions, so I think that will conclude. And thank you again, Assistant Chief Stebbin, for joining us.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, that moves us into agenda item number three, legislative file number 79974, amending section 2.13 of the Madison General Ordinance to reduce time allotted to each alder for discussion and debate. I'm not sure who I'm turning that over to. Okay. Vice President Figueroa Cole is the sponsor, and will speak to the measure. It's before us.
Do you want a motion to put it on the floor or not?
What? Okay. A motion?
Yeah, a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so I didn't prepare anything for this. Again, just another way of reducing, reducing the time on the floor, trying to be more effective. There were people that seemed to be interested in the matter, so that's, that's pretty much all I have on it. I think it's a, I mean, again, we give our speakers three minutes to speak, and I get it, they're speaking for themselves while we are here to speak for a broader audience. But I think we can, we can be more, we can control ourselves a little bit more, perhaps by preparing our comments or whatever and try to stick it to the lower, at the lower end of the time, between the three and six minutes mark. That's really all I have on this particular discussion.
Alder Conklin?
Yes, I mean, I agree with this wholeheartedly, but I'm just wondering, did MGR withdraw his, his second, his substitute or his amendment that he had put forward?
MGR.
Eternal, excuse me, Alder Govendarajan, excuse me. He had, yes, he had another one that was in here that I read.
Alder Duncan has proposed an alternate. I don't see Alder Govendarajan listed as a sponsor or an alternate with...
Okay, okay, okay. Maybe that was who it was. Okay, I apologize for the wrong alder, Alder Duncan. So did he withdraw or is it not?
I think Alder Govendarajan's alternate was to a separate ordinance about time for asking questions and responding.
Yeah.
So that's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, okay, okay.
And Alder Duncan, he has a proposed alternate, and he's aware he could either, you know, ask CCEC to discuss it or propose it at the council meeting.
Okay, but this is the only thing that's in front of us tonight then, is, okay. Well, I support this and I hope others will support this. I really hope that people can, and not only the minute time, but the amount of times of speaking, the number of times speaking, like, we have to hold ourselves accountable to two times and that's all that it should be. So I support this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govendarajan.
Thank you. Sorry, I might sound very sick, I am. But yes, I did not bring up the other alternative that I was going to do, and frankly, I don't even remember it. But regarding this one, I'm a little bit mixed on this. I think, I think six minutes should be fine. I'm a little hesitant on the alternate, talking about it for three minutes. I'm actually, nothing more for me to say here.
Thank you for the clarification, Alder, Alder Evers.
Yeah, I'm undecided about this. I don't think that our meetings are long, unduly long for this reason. I think they're in rare instances do people go over six minutes. I think they're unduly long because colleagues are often not prepared and pull things off the consent agenda that has questions of staff, you all know how I feel about that. So I think this is misguided in some ways, addressing trying to have shorter meetings because if we wanted to have shorter meetings, we could all effectively discipline ourselves and stay on point. And the time constraints are not going to do that in my mind, but, you know, I can vote for this, but I don't think it'll get us to where we need to be.
Thank you, Alder. Yes, I have a question, comments, comment then, a question. So obviously, this is a resolution to make an amendment to our current practice of speaking no more than twice on a question or motion for 10 minutes at one time without leave of two-thirds of the members present. I can't recall a time that I've served that this, there's been reminders, like for the second time, for the third time, but I can't remember, for instance, when the alder was speaking and maybe you have 30 seconds left. So I guess I'm also, I guess the question, but it's a rhetorical question, is are we currently abiding by current practice? And I think maybe depending on our experiences, we have different answers to that. And I also comment, kind of similar to Alder Evers of, we know these things are in place in the heat of the moment, it may or may not matter. And so I honestly don't, I applaud the effort for trying to find ways to make our meetings less lengthy and more efficient, but I also agree that this isn't necessarily the way to do it. Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Chair. So Karen, I have a question for you, staff. What's with that clock over there?
I was...
Why can't, why can't we use that clock as a timer and reminder that everybody can see what the time is up so they can either be three, six, 10 minutes, I really don't care? But why can't we use a tool such as the one on the wall right now?
Before you answer, sorry, for those who are not in chambers, Vice President Figueroa Cole is speaking about the time clock that is behind the TV to the right of the chairs. Right now, it says five minutes.
From what I understand, that was put in, maybe the tech facilitator can speak to this, from what I understand, it was put in for the purposes, so the folks at the dais do have that to use. For example, the mayor, whoever's chairing the council meeting can use that, that...
We can use it?
Possible to use, yes.
So...
Far as I'm aware.
So can we dig into using it? I know that the people, at some point, they didn't know how to, how did it work out, but can we just Google it?
I see the tech facilitator popped on screen.
Yeah, that was installed for that purpose, so it can be used for the purpose of keeping track of time. And I believe that there's a remote up there on the dais area that controls that.
So is there, is there like a set of instructions on how to change the five minutes to whatever is needed, either even for the speakers, for the people that speak three minutes, five minutes in?
I don't know if there's instructions there, but I believe that there was a training that was given to the clerks. I don't know anymore about that as far as the instructions, but we can make sure that we have that available.
And can it be placed in a way, in somewhere where it gets picked up by the, by the camera view for Zoom? You're muted.
Muted, Jesse.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Again, I think we should use that even, at least for the people that are on the floor. That's a good reminder, people can hold themselves accountable and, yeah. That's, it's a good, another method of us helping each other stay, staying in check.
I think, you know, one thing to keep in mind is just the logistics of the clerk staff, you know, with everything else they're doing up here, making sure that they reset the clock every time a new alder speaks. And then, of course, they would have to inform the mayor. I don't think there's a buzzer or something that goes off, and so just the logistics of how that would practically happen.
Is there a buzzer?
I believe that there is.
Did you want to add anything else, Jesse? No, okay. Question for attorney Haas. So, trying to think of how to say this. Obviously, this is our, there's an ordinance that already creates these boundaries in place, we're seeking to possibly change that. We have a meeting tonight after this. Let's say one of our, we've noticed one of our peers has spoken for the second time or maybe folks are taking their own time and it's time. Would it be appropriate at that point then to declare a point of order to refer to the MGO and then, okay?
Correct, right, correct. I mean, the trick is somebody's going to have to remember to start the clock to be timing 10 minutes. And I'm not sure that the mayor or the clerk does that on a routine basis, because most times, people do not speak for 10 minutes. It's a long time to be speaking at once. So we would, so a point of order, to answer your question, a point of order could be raised. As you know, the mayor typically reminds people, but if the council wanted to terminate the opportunity to speak, it can be, it'd be done by the chair saying your time is up or by a member of the council pointing that out. And if the chair does not cut the person off, the council could, there could be a vote to determine whether or not the time would be extended, and it would take two-thirds of all to extend the time.
I guess so. Never mind. I'm not seeing any other hands or indications, folks have comments or questions. Assuming there may not be unanimous agreement, I'd ask this to go to a roll, roll call vote.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Yes.
Alder Vediver?
Aye.
Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Govendarajan?
Nay.
Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Evers?
No.
Four ayes, two noes.
With four ayes and two noes, that passes and will be before council at our 6:30 meeting as well. All right, that is not the right agenda. That moves us into agenda item number four, legislative file number 80298. I do not believe I'm turning it over to anyone for a presentation, but as a reminder, this is a continued conversation as a shared priority that members of the executive council had shared this year when seeking election to the executive committee. The table that we talked about, or the table that was attached in Legista the last time that this item was before CCEC is attached again, and I would ask that we put that up on the screen as a reference for the conversation. And also, I believe if folks did not watch the recording or weren't already there during the operating budget hearings, we did get clarification confirmation from finance that alders and council leaderships pay would be increased as a result of, I keep getting it wrong, I believe it's COLA. Not seeing anybody glaring at me. And those numbers, I did request before our meeting today. So as it stands in 2023, alders, all alders have an annual rate of, annual salary $14,904, the vice president $16,078, and the presidents $18,135. The percent change is 1.5, so for 2024, that would be $15,127 for alder, $16,319 for vice president, $18,407 for president. And then the change within each of those is about a little over $200, so it'll be a $224 differential for alders, $241 differential for vice president, and $272 differential for president. So just wanted to elevate that and provide a visual, I'm a visual learner. I'm a visual learner, I don't know if, um, any of you are as well, but for that to kind of help us jump off conversations about an agreement for an appropriate, uh, rate or a rate that members would find comfortable. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, and I apologize because I missed the earlier meeting on this a couple of weeks ago. Um, this chart is informational, but I'm a little bit confused on what the proposed number is. Um, is it based on what category the Alder falls into? Or how does that work? Can that be explained a little bit?
So, um, Alder, we are trying to determine a number together as an executive committee. Um, and then in terms of there, there is a differential pay for council leadership. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm proud. Alder Conklin?
Um, thank you, Chair. What I, um, have come up with and what I've been thinking about is, and I don't know if it necessarily falls on here, which one it would necessarily fall under, but I think it's kind of closer to the median Madison wage. But in my opinion, I believe that our salaries should be doubled from whatever they are now or whatever they're going to be. Everyone's salary should be doubled. And I think that falls in close to the median Madison wage of about 2586 a hour. If we work the 20 hours point 81, that's about 27. That's pretty much double than what we're getting right now. So that's what I would be pushing for. I think that's only fair, um, for the amount of work that we do. Most people put in more than 20 hours a week anyways, especially during high peak times like budget season and things like that. So in order to make this job more equitable, to have more diverse people on the council, to retain those diverse people on the council, that is just the slightest thing that I believe could be done to keep enriching this council.
Thank you, Alder. For clarification, uh, do you have a number or?
Do I have a new number? You said?
Okay. Double of 2024 wages.
Of the new numbers you just told us?
Yes.
I didn't write those down, sorry. Cause, cause I was trying to see where you were saying, like, were they on the list up here that you were showing us or no? You just?
They weren't in anticipation of the conversation today. I emailed Christine Cohen Finance and she sent me a chart.
Can you tell me what the numbers are one more time? Just.
For 2024, for an Alder, $15,127.
Okay.
Vice president would be $16,319. And the president would be $18,407.
Okay.
So with those, um, even with the increase this year and looking at the table, um, definitely is falling under that median.
Mm-hmm.
Range you were talking about. And then, um, you said for the rate at the Madison median, median Madison wage of being $25.86?
Mm-hmm. Cause what's 13 times 7?
Which would move us into.
Yeah, it's like.
An annual salary, um, of about 27, $28,000.
Mm-hmm.
Alder Evers?
Thanks, President. It's my understanding that this is not, in some ways, relevant until, uh, not in the 2024 budget, but it's nothing that could be implemented uh, before the 2025 budget. Is that correct? Attorney Haas?
Correct. Um, new salary, a new salary schedule would not go into effect until after the next election. Um, as you know, we, the, both, the ordinance would need to be changed and it would need to be included in the, um, in the budget for that year. But the ordinance could be changed at any time.
So I think it would be appropriate for us to look through the mechanics of what it would mean to change the ordinance, what it would, what kind of votes would be necessary. I don't think it's likely for us to be able to get approved with this current council, a double, uh, doubling our salaries. So we may want to think more realistically of what's likely to get approved and be more incremental. All fairness and equity considerations aside, I think there's a need to be practical and predicates, you know, think of perhaps in steps. It may not be something that happens all at once, but to chart a path that's actually achievable. I don't think calling for the doubling of our salaries in one full swoop is achievable or it's not realistic concern considering the climate. And it's not realistic probably going into even more difficult budget, uh, in the future.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. Um, I think I'm in favor of roughly where the Madison median is. Um, simply, but I think, and this is probably common for anyone in my position, um, as District Eight Alder being a student, uh, the current wage we get almost, almost pays my rent. Uh, and it's kind of funny to think about, um, that it's, you would think being in an elected office might allow you to live in a city that you represent, but it really does not. Um, but I, uh, and that number isn't pulled up anymore, so I'm sorry. But I think it was 28 something per hour. Um, it, it makes sense that whatever the median that people in Madison are making, um, is representative of what we as representatives should also be making or could be making essentially because we are kind of in charge of the economic welfare of the citizens here. Um, and if the economic welfare goes down, so does our wages. If it goes up, so does our wages. Um, and it kind of places that responsibility within us. And that's kind of my mindset looking at this. So I think to pick that number, the median wage would make sense. Um, it's the bolded one. The June 2021 value is 2404. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, or Vice, Vice President Figaro Cole?
Um, I would just wanted, I mean, if, um, Alder Evers wants to answer, do you have a proposed amount that you would like to share with us? Cause at the end of the day, the dollar amount is on the ordinance, we do have to deal with that part. Do you have a suggestion? If not, double what?
Um.
Is he still alone?
I don't see Alder Evers' hand back up, but I do see Alder Vidiver, but Alder Conklin ringing first.
He's on his own.
Okay. Alder Evers, would you like to respond?
Yeah, just real quick. Um, then I've got to get ready to head on down to CCB pretty soon. I'm not really thinking of the 2025 budget right now. Um, and, um, but I do think that something more like a, um, an incremental raise, something more on the order of maybe a $5,000 raise rather than trying to double it is more like, more achievable in a tough budget climate. I think when you start talking about doubling it, it's, uh, it's gonna get a lot of pushback and I doubt will be supported based on my experience last year with certain voices on council.
Yep. So $1,000 you think will be, we can start something on, we can start with a, we could start with a whole amount versus, um, you know, the, the doubling of the wage table or whatever.
Yeah, I, I just think that something of a smaller amount or something more like 5,000 is more achievable.
Yep, I get it.
And, and therefore I would just urge you to consider that.
Thank you.
I gotta feed my dog.
Okay.
Did you have another or a question?
I, I don't, I just wanted, again, we're here today to try to figure out a number that we can suggest. We're not saying we're gonna, that's the number. It's just to get the conversation going because it's part of the ordinance. If it wasn't, we would just be changing the ordinance, but we can without the number. Just getting, trying to get that information across.
Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. And I want to make it clear to everyone listening, everyone in the public, that myself and others are not trying to give themselves raises. This will not go into effect until after the next election. So I'm really fighting for equity for more people of color to run and sit at this table and have their voices heard and still be able to maintain their family, their household and things like that. So I don't want it to get misconstrued that I'm trying to give myself a raise or other colleagues are trying to give themselves a raise because we cannot. We do not give ourselves raises. This is what we're fighting for in the future, for the next cohort that comes into this council floor. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver?
Um, so in these meetings, it's very difficult to understand, um, kind of what the appetite is for larger changes. So I've suggested in the past, and will do so again this evening, that, um, in my opinion, one opportunity to have a higher pay rate is to have a smaller council. And then the budget line stays the same. We have a very large number of people representing our community. There are communities around us that have much smaller councils or boards or whatever, um, that do justify, just as fine a job as we do. Um, we also have an even number of participants, which makes ties, uh, difficult to contend with. So, um, my proposal remains that we consider changing the number of Alders from 20 to 15. And then everyone would get a one point, you know, they get one point five times what they're getting now because there would be, um, quarter less of the council. So, uh, I'm hoping that we can come together on a way to try to work through that if there is appetite to do so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, did you still have something? No, okay. All right, well, whoop, that's the wrong agenda. We still have. Um. I guess based on that discussion, do we then have a motion that we would like to put forward in terms of a number? I've heard doubling the pay, I've heard $5,000. I see Vice President Figaro Cole.
We just, instead of, of settling an amount, can we just get, um, finance to, to put both, um, spectrum numbers for us? Like what would they look like for, and share that with us as a general? Like how much would that be on the budget with the 5,000 versus the doubling the, um, salary?
Okay, so the two, um, either looking at the chart or the.
Looking at the flat rate.
Flat rate.
Versus looking at the other one and how much, how, what the impact that would that be on the budget?
Okay. Yes, we are writing that down and we'll make that request and then, um.
So we can move this to the next one and continue the discussion with that information from Ross and take a vote? Would that work?
Yes, I also wanted to make sure, um, like Alder Vidiver, it wasn't necessarily a motion, but a suggestion. And, um, did hear at last meeting, is there any comments, discussion point around reduction of the council in order to achieve increasing Alder pay?
Yep.
Alder Govindarajan?
Hi, thank you. Um, I, I think it makes sense on paper just to achieve this number. And it's something that I know other councils across the country have smaller councils as well. Like I understand that, but Madison is very unique. We have this student seat and I know I am very biased to talking about this. Um, but I do think reducing the number of Alders on this council will lose this voice, my voice and every other voice that will continue, um, hopefully as the District Eight Alder. And that's very unique for this council. Madison truly does give it, the student population a voice. And expanding the districts, um, giving more constituents and potentially making the position of full-time job would make it nearly impossible for a student to hold this position. I am on this meeting sick on Zoom, but also studying for two midterms tomorrow. And this is not even my worst week yet. So I would really caution against that, that the council would be opening the doors potentially to a broader amount of financial incomes, but will definitely be losing a different source of perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Yes, the last thing. Um, I just, at this point, I just cannot see reducing the number of members on the council, especially with the way that Madison is rapidly growing with the numbers that we're expected to see in the next 10, 15 years. Like, I, I just can't imagine having less people, how we're gonna get the best work out of people when, if we're talking about combining more districts together and then who's going to, you know, take on these, this new population that's coming in and this growth of Madison? How is one gonna handle that when, right now, we're already, most districts are already 14,000 people in each district? So I, I just can't see supporting that with the way Madison is growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Evers?
Well, yeah, I just want to remind Alder Conklin, perhaps she wasn't on council when T-Foggs made the report and we went into, uh, what was it, a meeting of the whole? And really drill down on this. There are a lot of, uh, as Alder Vidiver said, there are a lot of cities bigger than Madison in the Midwest, other Big Ten college campuses that are, you know, roughly the size of Madison or bigger, who have, uh, their city councils with a smaller number of members. We are an outlier. And, uh, one of the ways that T-Foggs suggested that we could address this is by moving towards a full-time council paid appropriately. But to try to increase our salaries, increase the size of this council is gonna be, it brings some mathematical challenges, that's all. I think it means that we have to then put some additional pressure on the budget. And I think what Alder Vidiver is saying, you know, there is a way by, instead of doing what T-Foggs recommended, which was cutting the size of council down to 10. If we were to cut it to five, it could result in a significant pay increase for folks. And, and that would allow people arguably to be able to do the additional work. Um, but it's not also doubling the amount of work. It, it's, it's an incremental step in a direction that T-Foggs unanimously, after three years, came up with a report that I, you know, I think we still need to grapple with. So I, I appreciate Alder Vidiver sharing that. And to be reminded that the size of our council is a bit of an outlier compared to other cities our size and, and who function effectively in their own given situations. It's just something for us to consider.
Thank you, Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you. Um, I definitely wasn't there when the T-Foggs recommendations came through. Do we know if it mentioned at all of whether the other bigger cities than Madison, um, the Big Ten cities that have smaller councils have a college student representative on their council? Um, was that mentioned at all?
Not sure. Um, and for the sake of time, I can go and read the T-Foggs' report, but, um, not seeing anyone with a definite answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Figaro Cole?
Well, so I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to give us the numbers for the two, the two. the two, the two suggestions that were made for the double the the amount and the $5,000 increase and that we refer this to the next meeting. And I gotta get going here in a few minutes.
Right, we have a motion?
Thank you.
Second.
Second? I will assume unanimous consent unless I see or hear otherwise. All right, that motion passes. We'll take that up on our next CCEC agenda. That takes us to our last or item number five, council office updates.
I'll make that quick. It's features mostly announcements about upcoming staff out of office for the next couple of months and a reminder to provide three weeks notice for scheduling neighborhood meetings and to please note Debbie's out of office dates when you're planning. Speaking of planning, it's another reminder that the blog tool will not be available between November 2nd and November 8th. Um, as IT does updates, there will be more IT related updates as we move into the winter. And a reminder to everyone here who and all the Alders who have not yet had a chance to send back their feedback on the BCCs that they are um, assigned to, you have received um, individualized spreadsheets and some instructions. And if you'd like us to um, walk you through that, please let me um, and Isaac know. And that's the short, short, short version of this. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Karen. And that was all emailed. Um, don't see any questions. So I'll move us along to our last agenda item, which is future agenda items. Last meeting, we had a pretty robust list that was compiled. Um, and so I won't belabor us staying here by asking um, or spending a lot of time of, I guess if there are additional items or pressing items, discussion of reducing the size of the council is on this list as well, um, that members would say so at this time. Not seeing or hearing others, at least we know that continued conversation about increasing alder pay um, with the breakdown from the finance team will be before us and hope to deepen that conversation then. All right, that takes us to the end of our agenda.
Good luck to you, Chair.
All right, unless seeing here and otherwise, I'll assume unanimous consent and see you all at 6:30. Thank you.